Great, we are up and running. Thanks so much. We are starting at 7:04 PM today. Thanks for joining us. So we're calling the meeting to order. Do we have public comment?
Yes.
Yes, we do. We do. And so are there any students for public comment? Not so far. So... Call roll. Absolutely. I'm going to call roll first. Sorry, it was a little rusty here. I'm rusty here this summer. Let's call roll. Ms. Chardis.
Director Anavasudev.
Presenta.
Director Jennifer Shonoski.
Here.
Director Jennifer Korn.
Here.
Vice President Mike Chang.
Here.
President Khadija Brown. I'll lead today.
And thanks so much. We will now approve the agenda for this night's meeting. At the request of staff, Agenda Item 12, Superintendent Comments, will be moved to follow the report out on closed session. Are there any other requested changes, Board of Folks? Not seeing any...
None.
None? Not seeing any other requested changes. Seeing as there are no requested changes, is there a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved. Well, that's what I was asking.
All in favor? Oh, is it a second?
Just a point of clarification. There's an item I would like to pull from the consent calendar. Should I make that motion now or should I wait until we get to that item?
Make him up now.
Yeah. So I would like to pull, sorry, Item 13.8, Approval of Contract with Olivo Coast-to-Coast for After-School Program, from the consent calendar.
Great. So amended with both what I just referenced with regard to the agenda and also 13.8 as Director Shonoski requested.
And just for important clarity, are you suggesting that that become a discussion item for tonight?
Okay. So 13.8, from consent to a discussion item. Is there a motion to approve so and a second?
So moved with the suggested changes.
One second.
Any other requested changes? Seeing as there are no other changes, is there... All in favor, say aye.
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 Ms. Chardis, can you... Do you need to take a roll now? Where did you take a roll?
I was the only person.
Got it. Okay. So, thanks for coming back and spending time with us and sharing this space. And I hope everyone had a great summer. So this evening, the Board of Education will address and take action on a significant leadership transition. As per Board policy, we are required to elect a president, vice president, and clerk annually, a process that's typically completed at our last December meeting. However, the Board President Khadija Brown has temporarily resigned from her role as president to go on maternity leave. We wish her congratulations. Everyone's very happy for her and bond with her new baby. It is important to clarify that Director Brown is not resigning from the Board itself, but rather just from the presidency during her leave. At tonight's meeting, the Board will formally address Director Brown's temporary removal from the presidency and proceed with electing new officers to serve through the 2025-2026 school year. We anticipate Director Brown's return from leave in the fall of 2026. Upon her return, she will be reinstated as president to complete the remainder of her 12-month term for the 2026 calendar year. Is there a motion? And this is a two-part, which sounds a little odd, but it's per what I just referenced. Is there a motion to remove Director Khadija Brown as president and Mike Chang as vice president?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to remove the existing president and vice president, and then I will make a second motion to vote for new leadership. So should we vote first for the first motion to remove the president and the vice president? Board Secretary.
And the clerk.
No, no, sorry.
And we're removing the clerk.
Sorry.
Is there a second?
All three people.
I'll second the removal of all three positions.
Are there ayes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone not in favor? Not seeing or hearing any? Going on to the second motion. Motion to now appoint the Board President, the Vice President, and the Clerk.
Yes, I'd like to entertain a motion to vote Director Mike Chang as president of the Board, Director Jen Korn as vice president of the Board, and Director Shonoski as clerk of the Board of Education until the next organizational meeting, with the intent of them being in service for a consecutive year through next fall for continuity purposes. Is there a second?
Go ahead. I'll second.
Are there... All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Great. Both motions have been approved, and as stated, we have a new leadership team through next fall. Can we report out unclosed, Vice President Korn?
Yes. We have had three closed-session meetings since our last open session meeting. So on June 26th, the Board met in closed session to consider the superintendent's contract. We met again on August 4th to consider the same item. And then today, we met in closed session, during which we considered Item 3.1.1. The district provided a recommendation. Director Shonoski moved to approve. Director Korn seconded, and the Board voted unanimously to approve the item. For Item 3.1.2, the district provided a recommendation. Director Shonoski moved to approve it. Director Chang seconded, and the Board voted unanimously to approve. 3.1.3 and 3.1.4 were erroneously added to the agenda. They were actually duplications of 3.1.2. So then we also considered Item 3.2, Collective Bargaining. The district provided an update to the Board. And Item 3.3, the superintendent evaluation. The Board reviewed revisions to the contract. Director Shonoski moved to accept the revisions. Director... President Brown seconded the motion, and the Board voted unanimously to accept the revisions. And I should say that present... Should I say who was there? Director Chang, Director Korn, Director Shonoski, and Director Brown were present at today's closed-session meeting.
Thank you. We now have Superintendent Comments.
Thank you, President Chang. Good evening, BUSD family.
Good evening.
Wow. Had a whole summer. Let's do that again. Good evening, BUSD family.
Good evening.
I wanted to say good evening, and I'm so excited to be able to say Happy New Year, though not in traditional sense. We are so excited to kick off the 25-26 school year with you all. This is my fourth year as superintendent in Berkeley Unified School District, and every year, we start the year off with a hat, with a hashtag. My first year, we had Berkeley Ready. Second year, Berkeley Believes. Last year was Berkeley Together. And this year, we surveyed a number of our staff members to ask for their input, and we are excited to announce that this year's hashtag is #BerkeleyProud, because we have so many things to be proud of in our district. Things that we have done, yes, but also excited and proud about the things that we are going to do together in service of our students and, of course, of you or families. Berkeley Proud was actually offered to us by Nicholas. Nicholas Williams, who is a teacher at Ruth Acti. And Nicholas said that Nicholas, he is proud of our diversity, proud of our families and students, proud of our staff, proud of our literacy adoption, proud of our rainbow families, proud of Black lives. We are proud to be Berkeley Unified. And so Nicholas offered, and you're going to hear me say this a lot, Nicholas said that we should say, "Say it loud." And then you're supposed to say?
Berkeley Proud.
Let's practice that. Say it loud!
Berkeley Proud.
Okay, well, practice that, okay, you guys? Okay. So we're excited, because again, we think it's going to be a great school year. We are also excited and proud to welcome you back officially the first day of school next Wednesday, August 13th. And so we know that the babies are excited. We hope that you're excited, and we know that that entails a lot of getting ready. So as you are getting ready for the first day of school, I wanted to share a couple of things with you. The first is that this Saturday, August 9th, from 10:00 to 1:00 PM, BUSD's OFI team will be providing school supplies for TK to 12th grade students at San Pablo Park. This is a yearly tradition. It's a big deal. It's a great time to come out and be in community, and also a great way to get your baby the supplies that they need, super cool backpacks and things. And so we're grateful to the Berkeley Public Schools Fund, SupplyBank.org, City of Berkeley, and Covenant Church for the support of the Berkeley Unified Students to kick off again this year's event. Also, I, like many of you in the space, am a parent. I'm a mommy of a middle schooler going into 7th grade, so I know a big part of getting ready for the school year is also understanding the child's schedule and then figuring out how you're going to make sure there's care before school and after school, as many of you, like me, work. And so I wanted to make sure that folks know that on tonight's agenda, we are preparing a presentation, a discussion item, to provide an update on our extended day in after-school care. We've heard your concerns. We want to share some of the ways that we tried to respond to those concerns and to share updates on our ongoing work to do our best to provide after-school programming for as many students and families as possible. If you stay beyond that, you'll also get an opportunity to hear an update on our budget. You might recall that the end of last school year, there was a lot of uncertainty with the state budget, and then subsequently, in the summertime, there was some uncertainty even with the federal budget. We are now a little bit more certain and more clear, and so we'll be presenting to our Board what our revenues are from the state and a better picture of what we anticipate our fiscal situation looking like for the 25-26 school year. So a very important discussion that I hope that you all stay to be a part of and listen to. Finally, as I prepare to close, President Chang, I do want to just take a moment to honor and remember two people who we lost this summer, members of our BUSD community. First, I want to acknowledge Midori. Midori was an educator in one of our schools... Sorry, I'm Brooklyn, not feeling the best. Apologies for my breathing. Midori was an educator in BUSD. She worked for BUSD for almost a decade as a school psychologist. And Midori and her husband Andy had dedicated their lives, have dedicated their lives, to public education. Andy as a beloved BUSD teacher and Midori as a compassionate school psychologist, serving at Emerson, John Muir, and Oxford. So Midori had the privilege of working with many of our students in BUSD, and many of our students and staff had the privilege of being touched and inspired by Midori's life. Midori is remembered as the person who you want in your corner, spending hours off the clock, making sure every detail of a child's educational plan was carefully crafted to truly meet their needs. Her work was rooted in deep empathy and a fierce commitment to equity for all children. And so we wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the life and the legacy that is Midori and the various ways that Midori has impacted our BUSD community. I also want to take a moment to recognize and honor the life of Mr. Jonathan Dillard, J.D. Guidi. Jonathan was not a member of the Berkeley Unified Community in the traditional sense and that he was not an employee. However, he was a member of the construction team that has been working hard in service of our students and families at Sylvia Mendez to give our babies a different and better place to be each day. Jonathan was a construction worker who was working on the modernization of Sylvia Mendez, as I said, and he passed away in a construction accident at the site in July. He leaves behind a wife and seven children, and we recognize and value the many contractors and subcontractors who are involved in modernizing our schools and their families and all they do in the way to give us their time and their heart and their talent and energy to make our learning spaces beautiful. The family and the construction crew remain in our thoughts, and we send them strength and comfort in this difficult time. There is a GoFundMe both for Jonathan Guidi's family, again, he's left behind seven children and a spouse, as well as for Midori's family, who is still, her husband and educator here in BUSD, and she also has a child here in BUSD. And so information about how to contribute will be available on our website, but also wanted to pause just in a moment of appreciation of the life of Jonathan Guidi as well. I appreciate your thoughts and your prayers, and I appreciate all the ways that we work in collaboration, still Berkeley Together, to have a wonderful school year. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Superintendent. We will now move to public comments. There are two opportunities for public comments at each meeting, now and also at the end of the meeting. And if you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, we do encourage you to stay and to speak at the end of the meeting. You may also email us your comments at boardofed@berkeley.net. The Board does not respond directly to comments or questions made during public comment. Board members, the superintendent, and the staff do take notes during public comment and may follow up with the speaker after the meeting. This is a hybrid meeting, which means that we have public commenters in the boardroom and also online. We have designated 15 minutes to our in-person speakers, to be followed by 15 minutes for any speakers online. That's not per person, that's in total for each. Each public commenter will have up to that minute, depending on the amount of speakers. Please note that the microphone will shut off at the end of each speaker's allotted time. There's a buzzer, so time your comments accordingly. To keep things moving, I will call two names at a time, so that the speaker who is next in line can then get ready and come forward and wait near the mic. I apologize in advance if I pronounce anyone's name incorrectly. You can also correct me if that happens. Our standard practice is students first, then groups, and then individuals. Okay. We will begin first with... There's no students, right? Any other students come on in? Nope? All right. And please do correct me for pronunciation. Ramya Ragavan.
Can I begin? Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for having us. My name is Ramya Ragavan, and I am a parent of two students at John Muir Elementary. The first is an incoming third grader, and the second is an incoming TKer. I had the pleasure of attending our TK and kindergarten playdate at John Muir on Saturday. And overwhelmingly, the parents are excited. They were full of joy. The kids were so excited to meet each other. We also have a WhatsApp group, and throughout both the playdate and on the WhatsApp group, there is a sense of anxiety and frustration at the lack of confirmed after-school care for our children. I think this is across the grades, a backlog at Bears, which we're all aware of. This is not just John Muir. This is across the district. But I want to speak specifically on behalf of our TK parents, because we've been given a gift. TK enrollment is strong. We want to bring these students into John Muir, show them the magic, get them to be Berkeley Proud. And I fear that we aren't doing justice to these families, to these students, by not offering them a way not only to experience the full day of education, but then beyond the play, the care, and the opportunity to connect with staff and each other. So on behalf of TK parents and parents more broadly, I really encourage you to treat this like a very serious crisis, because as working parents, we need to be able to guarantee care. Thank you so much. One other point is, I know that there are some after, off-school programs, very difficult to put a three- or four-year-old on a bus.
Andrew Oliveri, thank you so much. Thank you. Next up will be Mike Jeff and Mike Vandeman. You can wait for a second, then prepare to come on up.
Buenas tardes. My name is Sandro Oliveri. I am the father of three daughters attending John Muir Elementary. My youngest is going to be going into TK this year. We're very excited. She's very excited to go. Same topic as before. You know, many families in our community, you know, we're part of the tours, welcoming people to the school. We're deep members of our community. Lots of families were excited to enroll in TK with the understanding that there would be an option for after-school care. As we, near the start of school, like Ramya mentioned, dozens of families were told just a few days ago that there would be no available spots, and the only available city-run spot with busing at the clubhouse that was just built, which is beautiful, has a waitlist of over 70 kids, and is just not accessible. And inaccessible options are just not options. And so it's not just frustrating, it's destabilizing. It's forcing us to make impossible choices about care, work, and safety for our kids. And it's happening to the families with four-year-olds, you know, kids that need stability and consistency the most. So this is a crisis. We feel it in that way. I know some of you do, too. You know, there are... I know there's a lot of stuff at play, budget shortfalls, political complications, red tape, all of those things. I'm a parent, and those things are not my job. Those things are your job. My job is to care for and advocate for these kids, and that's what I'm here to do today. Not just my kids, but all of the TK families across the district who should become Berkeley Proud and should be strong members of our community. You know, I don't want to just raise problems. If there's anything I can do, I will do it, but we need the Board and the district to help us pave the way and to show us what we can do to help fix this problem. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on up is Mike Jeff. Jeffy?
Thank you, the Board, for allowing me to speak tonight. Very similar topic here, so it'll be a recurring theme. I'm the father of two kids, a seven-year-old at Sylvia Mendez, returning LEARNs student, second grade, incoming second grade, and an 11-year-old at Longfellow. Like many of the parents here, I was told that we were waitlisted. It's now one week to go, and we feel this is somewhat of an existential threat, because we are both working parents with commutes. It is insanely impractical to pick up our children in the middle of the day. It means that we're going to have to make massive adjustments and potentially impact the security of our jobs, which in this day and age seems like a very precarious position to be in. We've been told that staffing levels are adequate to support the children. We do not understand why, with one week left, we've been told nothing. Emails have gone unanswered. It seems incumbent on the program to let us know, like, what is happening on day one of school for families that are dependent on this program. I just want to also say that while you did open up, or the City of Berkeley opened up additional programs without transportation, it is virtually impossible to make arrangements with either some sort of private transportation service or another kind of service to get our kids there, that the logistics just do not exist. So if you're going to work with the city to open up care, transportation has to be a factor of that. And also, I just want to speak on behalf of the kids, like, our children have formed, like, bonds with a lot of the staff. They love being with the kids at their program. They're very attached, and we're sort of punishing them, saying that they cannot go back. Now, I know it's not us, but I just think we need to reinforce and make this feasible. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Is Mike Vandeman here? Mike Vandeman is not here. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I apologize. Here you are. Thank you.
The Berkeley High School mountain bike team is a disaster. I've tried to talk to the high school principal and the previous principal. They won't talk, wouldn't talk to me. The supervisor, the superintendent of schools, the previous superintendent of schools. I've talked to the school board. They got no reaction. Mountain biking is environmentally destructive, is socially destructive, it drives other people off the trails and out of the parks. That's why bicycles are not allowed on sidewalks. They're dangerous. It's medically very destructive. I've kept a record since 2007 of over 1,100 serious mountain biking accidents, like broken bones, paralysis, about 130 deaths in this, about one a month from mountain biking. Are you waiting for someone to die? Every week, I see high school, Berkeley High School mountain bikers illegally riding on UC Berkeley property. I don't understand why this club is so sacred. If they want to kill themselves, that's fine, but why is Berkeley High School sponsoring this destructive activity? And in line with the theme of tonight, this is nothing to be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on up, we have Mimi Main and Parissa. Mimi, great, if you could come out first, and then Parissa, if you want to come get ready.
Hi there. Thanks for having me. My name is Mimi Main, and I am the mom of a, oh gosh, first grader at John Muir. We did our first year of TK at Emerson, and then we moved over to John Muir, and we've been exceedingly happy with our BUSD experience so far. Two years ago, to the day yesterday, we were panicking because we found out we did not get an after-school spot at our TK school. And we, after total panic, found a place. There were spots in the City of Berkeley after-school care programs at Willard. I also tried to get really creative, and for a moment there, I was thinking about driving my kid up to his old preschool every single day, which would have been extremely painful for us. But they had space for us in the Willard program, and that was amazing. So last year, our kiddo was in the after-school program at John Muir, which is just Bears. They don't have LEARNs. And it was phenomenal. The staff was incredible, and it was just a really lovely, safe space. We really did the thing that most parents do and assumed it would all work out. And we still have not yet heard, either way, if our kid has this place, but we assume we will be rejected. And we haven't since waitlisted in multiple places, but it feels like way worse this year. Like, I'm hearing about full classes of TK parents that are told there's no spaces for any TK. I've heard about a couple dozen returning parents like us whose kids did not get a spot in the program that they were in last year. And so I just... I'm freaking out. I urge you to consider any and all suggestions that come your way. I know the John Muir PTA is sending a letter, if they haven't already, with some specific measures that can be taken. And yeah, just really, any help would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Parissa?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Parissa Paimani. This is my daughter Soraya that goes also to John Muir. And I want to share the sentiment of other parents that go to John Muir. I am self-employed. I'm a single mom, so you can imagine the dire situation that I am in for after-school program. I don't have any family members, so I'm a first-generation immigrant. And I was told, two months before the school ends, that I can go on the Berkeley Unified School District website to sign up for this after-school program. I followed the instructions. I constantly tried to call and check with the members, and to no avail. I found out that the person is in charge, got laid off, and there's a new person. And despite my numerous emails and phone calls, I was, I had to finally go to 2020 Bonnar Street on Monday, only to be rerouted to 1005 Parker Street to find the person, and be told that there had been 10 kids assigned to one staff member and 10 other kids to another staff member. And it's just, they're looking for more people to hire, but don't have your hopes up, because if other kids, it becomes more, because on the list, maybe my daughter's name goes further down. So again, I'm freaking out like every other parent here. What are we going to do? It's just a week before the school. So any attention to this matter would be highly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Parissa. Next on up, we have Stephen Finnicorn. Finnicorn, Finnicom, and you'll have to correct me. And also Eva Crisanté. Stephen, I pronounced your last surname properly.
It's Finnicom. Yeah. Good evening, Board members. So you may remember several months ago, I came to speak to you regarding construction impacts and issues at Sylvia Mendez School Project, and I asked that you would communicate with neighbors. I'm back tonight with a renewed sense of urgency on the same matter. Since my time is short, straight to the point, there are daily hazards and ongoing safety issues on the perimeter of the... issues on the perimeter of the Sylvia Mendez site. If I had time, I could tell you about half a dozen I observed just this morning. Basically, in my view, the contractor de facto treats the perimeter streets and sidewalks as part of the active construction site. Unsafe movement of vehicles, construction vehicles driving down the street, parking violations, blockages, crosswalks, sidewalks, and the street appropriation of parking that the contractor is not entitled to, use of the street for construction activities, including putting unattended electric generators in the street, and even setting up things like makeshift workstations for welding in the public street. Bunch of stuff like that. At least two vehicles of neighbors have been hit, and nobody's been injured so far, but the public sidewalks that parents and students will use next week have been severely damaged by the construction project, and they'll be open for use. When school starts again this week, school staff, next week, school staff, teachers, parents, and children will join the neighbors in facing these hazards, not necessarily within the school campus, but on the public perimeter. The city of Berkeley has paid increasing attention in recent months to try to bring the contractor into compliance with city rules and regulations. Are you aware that the city has issued multiple violation notices and fines to the contractor? You should find out about that. So, once again, I want to ask, please talk to the neighbors, find out what's actually going on there around the site, and take firm action to correct hazards before they turn into tragedies. We've seen recently one avoidable death. It's time for BUSD to reach out to reduce the chances for another accident and collaborate with neighbors on public safety. And here's my contact information. Thank you.
Thank you. Eva Crisanté?
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm not better prepared. I was walking back from Archives, and I realized there's a school board meeting. So I just wanted to share with you a couple of issues that I've been reporting on at One is the issue of Assembly Bill 715, or 715, which is an anti-teacher bill, which is opposed by the CTA. And it appears to be coming back to the legislature after the recess, after August 18th, and it's very worrisome. It's going to have a very oppressive effect on teachers, and so I just want people to be aware of that. A lot of people are writing about it. Nadia Rahman is writing about it on Substack, and so is Marcy Winograd. I think she's been writing about it at Counterpunch. I also want to let you know that a lot of people in Berkeley don't know that some of the curriculum for the state is now being written through a private organization called the JFCS of the Bay Area. And this is for a Holocaust and genocide education program that is very racist and omits any mention of Palestinians at a time when they're being forcibly starved. And this is, they're getting $8.5 million from the state, in state educational grants that's being moved specifically through the Marin County Office of Education, because they could never get away with it. They did it through Alameda County, San Francisco County, or even Sonoma County. So I've been reporting on that, and I'll still be tracking that process, but it's a very broken system. Obviously, an $87 million nonprofit institution that has no qualifications to write curriculum should not be receiving state educational grants. So I just ask you to be aware of that, and of course, that's all available at MarinCountyConfidential.substack.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on up, we have Jennifer House.
Thanks so much, everyone. I actually found out about this meeting just an hour or so before it started. Thank you. And with the after-care issue that you've already heard about from a number of speakers, we'll be back at the next board meeting. I am from Washington Elementary, a parent there. One of my children just promoted from there, and will be going to Longfellow, and I have another coming in as a TKer. And there are scores of parents in the same situation. So I'd just like to join the John Muir parents, the Sylvia Mendez parents, and I think there are other schools also going through the same issue. This is a crisis. You all know this. Thank you so much for listening to us over and over. It is an absolute crisis. I cannot speak more to what's been going on for us as far as the amount of psychological energy and suffering this has caused. I've cried about this already, at least two times today. Do I have to quit my job? What can I do? How can I continue to live in this city that I love, that I have lived in for 25 years, and send my child to a school that I love, that I have been at for six years already with the current situation of not being able to have after-care? So I think, as a parent, as many of you being parents who understand this predicament, thank you so much for helping us. I just want to name also, we are here to also be solutions and helpful. I appreciated the gentleman who mentioned that, too. Not only putting this out there is a major issue, but also if there is something that parents can do to support this, we will help organize it. I'm on the PTA, I'm happy to do whatever it takes, but we have to come up with some other solutions. I mean, I can just put this out there, the program that opened up at McGee-Totland was filled in four hours. And every parent, all 26 families that signed up for that, have to pick their children up and take them there in the middle of the day. And I know, y'all, you had a four-year-old, you can imagine, that's not going to work. That child is not going to want to leave me and then go to that other place, right? No matter how good the relationship is with those people. So please, thank you so much for listening to us, and continue to put this on the number one top for the agenda as the school year starts. It is a crisis. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And next on up, we were going to see if there's anyone online. Ms. Charis, are there folks online? And I apologize, on my side, I have a web problem.
Are you in?
Yep.
There you go.
There we go. So we got four.
And also Spencer Pritchard.
Okay, Spencer Pritchard is also, so does it look like Emily Han is first? Am I in the correct order?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Han, or Emily Han?
Hi, can you hear me? Yes?
Yeah, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, superintendent and board members. My name is Emily Han, and I'm the parent of two kids at Rosa Parks. Four years ago, I made my first public comment on the after-care crisis, and absolutely nothing has changed. The lack of change on this issue is unacceptable and frankly insulting to the parents that have dedicated hours to working with the district on practical solutions, none of which have been implemented. The city of Berkeley stepped in in a big way this year to significantly expand the spots in their after-school programs, but the district cannot meet their expansion with transportation, which renders the expansion useless for parents who cannot stop their workdays to transport their children to an after-school program. My child, despite having an assigned bus seat, is on a waitlist to actually get to the after-school program they need to go to, despite there already being a stop at that program. I and other parents have been told that we have to wait until the school year starts to receive updates on whether we have bus seats. The stress this puts on families who already had to scramble to find non-BUSD after-care is intense and untenable. I know that there are budget and other considerations beyond our control, but BUSD decided admirably to use a non-neighborhood school system to reduce segregation. It must have transportation and other measures in place to meaningfully support that system in the year 2025, when most parents work. I want to stress what an earlier parent said, it should not be the responsibility of parents to figure this out, despite the fact that we will. We will help you, we want to help you, but it is your job to figure out solutions. And year after year, we just keep hearing that there is nothing more that can be done. I'm for another year begging you to do what it takes to fix this. I know that you all want to stop hearing from me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on up, we have Laura Smith. Thank you, Laura.
Hi. I'm sorry, I'm wearing a baby right now and overseeing bath time, but as you can imagine, as everyone else has told you, this is an incredibly important issue. I'm the parent of a Malcolm X first grader who was in LEARNs last year and is now waitlisted. This is the second time we've heard this, and I had to go three times to the LEARNs office, and I really didn't get any answers. There's been a total lack of communication that has been really hard. It's really stressful. My husband's a full-time student, I work full-time, and our plan right now is just for him to drop out of school. And so that'll be an additional year that we will go without a two-income household. I would say the only other issue that everyone hasn't already said is that the one program, the one Berkeley city program that my daughter got into, the start times don't match our dismissal times. So on Wednesdays, in addition to having to transport her, we're going to have to entertain her for an hour. So obviously, this is not feasible. The other thing I would say is that the private programs are too expensive. Like, we can't afford them, and I'm sure that there are many other families in the same position. So you all get it. We want to do whatever we can to help you. I've heard from LEARNs that it's a hiring issue, but I haven't seen a lot of information about the hiring, and, you know, they pay $30 an hour. It's, you know, I haven't seen this promoted at all. Yeah, we're here to do whatever we can to help, and we desperately need this to be solved. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next on up, we have Owen Thompson-Lastad. Owen, are you on still? I see Owen.
Hello. Good evening, board, everyone. I am also a parent of one child starting in LEARNs at Longfellow this year, as a rising sixth grader and a rising third grader at Sylvia Mendez. Our kids have been at LEARNs for six years. And a couple of things I want to say, obviously, I echo what everyone else has already said. To afford to live in Berkeley is very hard to do if you don't have two working parents. So we are all in the same crisis. It is very painful to feel like we're back in 2020, when it falls completely on the parents to figure out how the heck we're taking care of our kids and keeping them safe, and getting them to educational opportunities. Also, in the Sylvia Mendez community, there are children who don't speak English when they started Sylvia Mendez, and there are a lot of parents in that community who don't speak English. And so I really want to remind you, that's very important to prioritize bilingual after-care, which Sylvia Mendez has, and as far as I know, no other school has. I will just also echo what other folks have said, that I'm sympathetic to the resources thing. I really wish this had been fixed by now, and I'm not sure that BUSD has not made some mistakes that we're back here again, but the communication part of it just really boggles the mind at this point. I think that it's hard to believe that no one in BUSD had this information and couldn't give us this information sooner, and we are just going to be back in the same situation with extremely frustrated parents if BUSD cannot hire somebody in this position who can communicate adequately with the community. Thank you so much for listening to my comments.
Thank you. Lily Simonson is next. Lily, are you still online?
I don't see Lily. Let me see if she's still.
We're going to move on, since we don't see Lily.
Oh, I see Lily. She's next to her.
Here comes Lily.
That's our last online speaker.
Hi. I just wanted to add to the chorus of parents that are feeling completely panicked about after-care and not understanding the change from last year. Last year, my daughter was admitted to Bears in July. This year, we've, we heard nothing. I have a rising TK kid and a rising first grader at John Muir. My job includes me being away for long periods of time, working with scientists at remote field sites. I'm supposed to spend a month in Antarctica in a few weeks, and right now, I don't know who will be able to care for my kids while I'm gone. So, yeah, I really am freaking out, and I would love to help spread the word if it's a hiring issue. Like, I'm a connector, you have so many parents willing to help you, to do anything to help support the community, and I love being a part of BUSD. We are so happy with the class sizes, with the teachers, with the principals, but, you know, I don't see this in other districts, this dearth of after-care, and it seems especially acute this year. Like, there seems to be a really big change, and we, we all want to help. So let us know what we can do to help. And I won't keep repeating the same points, but, yeah, we're, we're here, we're all experiencing a crisis, and we really want to help you help us. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Lily. I think we're going to go to in-person committee, and then we do know that there is, Spencer Pritchard is online for online committee.
That's right.
There, Ms. Charis has said that's correct. Are there in-person committee comments? I'm not seeing any. So Spencer, would you like to speak on behalf of your committee?
Oh, God.
Spencer, are you ready?
He's joining as a panelist now. You're muted.
Did you hear that?
I did, thank you. I clicked the button, but didn't cooperate. Good evening, board members, superintendent for Longfellow, and members of the BUSD community. My name is Spencer Pritchard. I'm a teacher at Berkeley High School, one of the co-leads of the African-American Studies Department. I'm also having the privilege of being part of the Superintendent's African-American Student Achievement Committee, or ASAC. So on behalf of ASAC, we welcome you back at the start of the school, of the school year, a year that's already marked by both immense challenges and powerful opportunities. We also want to extend our heartfelt congratulations and best wishes to our forever champion and advocate, Board President, or temporary not Board President, Kedee Brown, on the beautiful expansion of your family. President Brown, we hold you in care and celebration as you embrace this new chapter. And we thank you for your continued leadership and presence, even as you take this well-deserved time with loved ones. As we know, this summer has been one of the most volatile for public education in recent memory ever for my whole entire career, just about, from the proposed defunding of the Department of Education to the abrupt halving and eventual release of critical federal funds to our states, and the mounting fiscal pressure facing every district across California, this has not been business as usual. We understand the tremendous difficulty of the '25-'26 budget, and an even tougher road for '26-'27. And yet, despite these headwinds, we thank you. Thank you for your prudence, your stewardship, and above all, your commitment to ensuring that the students who have been most vulnerable in this system, especially Black and African-American students, remain a central priority. Tonight, we're proud to submit the Three-Year African-American Success Framework (AASF) report, a document that not only measures progress, but proves what's possible when a community holds firm to its promises. The AASF has been our North Star. It's demonstrated how a shared commitment to equity, when paired with the right structures and partners, can actually move the needle. This report shows that we're not just checking boxes, we're building systems, we're landing supports, and we're doing exactly what we said we would do. We have momentum, but vigilance is the price of progress. To this end, the ASAC met twice over summer, and they're actively organizing and recommitting itself to ensure that the AASF doesn't become just a report on the shelf. We will continue to be a vocal, visible reminder of what this framework was designed to do: transform systems, not simply respond to symptoms. We also know that the success of this work depends on how deeply it is felt across the district. So we're focused on reaching in to ensure more parents, more students, more educators, and more school communities feel included, informed, and inspired by the work underway. We're especially aligned with the districts renewed for focus on literacy implementation, and we stand ready to support in all ways we can, particularly ensuring that Black learners are not left behind in the urgency to improve outcomes. We also must be honest, we can't do this alone. As we begin this new year, we want to ensure that ASAC has the staffing, structure, and strategic support needed to continue this critical work with integrity and impact. This is not a volunteer endeavor, it's a system-level work that deserves system-level investment by a lot of passionate volunteer members on the committee as well. Finally, we invite all of you and we stand ready to support in all ways we can, particularly ensuring that Black learners are not left behind in the urgency to improve outcomes. We also must be honest, we can't do this alone. As we begin this new year, we want to ensure that ASAC has the staffing, structure, and strategic support needed to continue this critical work with integrity and impact. This is not a volunteer endeavor, it's a system-level work that deserves system-level investment by a lot of passionate volunteer members on the committee as well. Finally, we invite all of you, Board members, district leaders, and the broader BUSD community to join us at the Fourth Annual Black to School Event, happening on Saturday, September 20th, at Willard Middle School. Saturday, September 20th, at Willard Middle. This event is more than a tradition, traditional back-to-school event. It's a moment of affirmation, unity, and of joyful resistance. It's where Black families are welcomed, seen, and celebrated by the entire Berkeley community. Not just for surviving another year, but for showing up with excellence and expectation. We look forward to continuing our partnership with the Board, the Superintendent Ford Mortel, and as our leader, and within the entire BUSD family. Thank you so much, and welcome back to school.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. Do we have union comments today? I don't see any union persons here, and do we have any otherwise? No, we do not. Thank you so much. Board member comments? Which of my colleagues would like to go first? Vice President Corn.
I'll go first. I'll keep my comments brief. I'm very much looking forward to the start of this new school year and particularly some of these exciting events that are coming up, like the school supplies giveaway at San Pablo Park and the Black to School event that Spencer Pritchard just mentioned that I've gotten my calendar. Thank you, Spencer. And I'm just grateful to everyone who came out tonight for our first board meeting of the year, even if it is to express concerns and frustrations. We're glad you're here, and I hope that we'll be able to move toward solutions as best we can. I am glad that we'll be getting an update this evening about after-school programming, and again, hopeful that we can move towards some solutions. I'm also, of course, really looking forward to tonight's budget update, and I'll be grateful for the increased clarity about both the state and the federal budget. And finally, I would just like to echo the Superintendent's comments about both of our losses this summer. I knew Midori personally, she was a school psychologist who I worked with when I was a principal, and she was really a lovely human being who brought such compassion and wisdom and joy to her work with some of our most vulnerable children. So thank you for your kind words about her and about JD, the construction worker who passed away at Sylvia Mendez. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight.
Thank you so much, Vice President. Which one of our colleagues would like to go next? Director Shnaski?
Okay, I'd also like to keep my comments short. Welcome, everyone, back to school. I want to announce I have office hours next Thursday at Casa Latina from 3:00 to 5:00. So, yes, mark your calendars, come visit me, grab a snack, and come and chat. I also want to express my gratitude to our HR department and our Personnel Commission staff for a job fair that they held yesterday? Was it just yesterday? Staffing is a real challenge. It's a challenge that I think is really hard to understand until you really dig into the mechanics of it all. And so I'm really thrilled that BUSD is using some new opportunities and new ideas to really ensure that we're able to hire for some of our vacancies more quickly, more efficiently, and therefore fill more of them. I also want to thank the staff for putting together the presentation tonight on our after-school program. It is very complicated. It's something that we've been really engaged in, well, I know I, as a board member, on the Two by Two Committee, which is a city school board committee. We've been really engaged in a lot of discussions around it, and so I'm hoping that those meetings get scheduled soon and that people keep an eye out for them, because they're great opportunities to come and advocate around how we can better partner and continue to try to improve things. So that's it. I also want to express my condolences for the losses that BUSD has experienced and also celebrate the new life of baby Camden, Khadija's new daughter. So congratulations, Khadija. We hope you're listening from home while you're snuggling your baby.
She should be getting some rest. Thank you so much, Director Shnaski. And would Director Asadev like to go next?
Sure, I'll keep my comments short as well. Just wanted to welcome everyone to the upcoming school year. I know that we're still working out a lot of glitches, but appreciate all the parents that came to share your frustrations and your opinions on how we can improve the situation with our aftercare programs. I'm looking forward to the presentation today and to asking the staff some of your questions as well. I also wanted to thank our superintendent for announcing the school supply giveaway this weekend. I'll be there volunteering, and I'm excited to get to know our parents and our students, especially those students that are new to the district or that are making big transitions into sixth grade, into ninth grade. As a mom of a ninth grader, I'm there with you with all the back-to-school anxiety, so I'm looking forward to meeting you all this weekend, and please come out and say hi. I also just wanted to share that, you know, I've been busy. Part of another board called the California Latino School Board Association, the statewide board where we fight to protect the needs of our over 50% student population, public school student population that identifies as Latino in the state of California. And given all of the anti-immigrant rhetoric that we've heard at the federal level, it's been really hard to do that work. And so I'm excited that in September, there's going to be our annual Unity Conference, Unidos en Acción, where we come together with all of our affinity groups. So we invite our African-American partners in our school board world, also our API partners in our school board world, so CAPSE and APISMA, and also superintendents from throughout the state, so we can talk about the needs of all of our most vulnerable students and particularly the impacts to English language learners and funding dedicated to those students. So I look forward to attending that conference and reporting back to my colleagues and hope that some of my colleagues can join me should your schedule permit, because the conference is open to everyone, and I think that all of our students, regardless of what their backgrounds are, are our students. And so with that, I will say that I just want to acknowledge that there are students coming back who have heard just, you know, very scary rhetoric out in the media, coming back to school, and parents that are dropping off their kids, not knowing if they're going to be able to pick them up. And so that's a real fear that's happening throughout this country right now. There's a book called Tengo Miel that's been published for little kids, created by several therapists, to talk about deportations and the fear that there's out there based on what's out there in the media. So I'll be sharing that on my personal website, but just wanted to make sure that folks know that if that's something that could be helpful to your child, to please reach out to me and would be happy to be in touch. And with that, I look forward to tonight's discussion and want to congratulate, I'm going to clap for my colleagues who are all stepping up to leadership roles. We have a clerk, a VP, and a president. Look forward to working with all of you and supporting you in those roles, and thank you for stepping up.
Thank you so much, Director Asadev. And I'm going to keep mine short as well. Folks have noted the challenging times that we are in currently, that this summer in particular has felt like an acceleration of the attacks on education and public education in particular. You know, we're here with you, everyone's figuring things out in a way that, that's a book? Oh, cool, thank you. Disrupting my train of thought. It's okay. These are very challenging times, and I think personally for a lot of folks here, too. And as Anna noted, there are some, we have some of our community members that are directly impacted in manners that are very, very visceral as well. So I appreciate the call-outs for transformative education. I think this is a moment to be really, to carry on but not necessarily be calm, so to speak. Transformative education is something that I think Berkeley is, part of our Berkeley Proud value system is transformative education. And also, we heard from a lot of parents who are very concerned about their ability for continuity of their day with aftercare, et cetera. This is something that I personally was impacted as well, my family and my spouse and I. So we understand how challenging that can be. So we're working to try to figure this out, and I'm willing to hear from you as well. Ping me on email, you know, you all have my email. Office hours, too, set up office hours. And of course, again, congratulations to Director Brown. So looking forward to meeting her, her mini, mini-me, but please do get lots of rest. Thank you. And we are going to move on, I think everyone's done, to our next item. So we're on the consent calendar. However, a couple of points. We are, number one, 13.8, a reminder, is going, has been shifted to a action item. And on 13.19.
Sorry for the interruption, discussion item, right? And then our action item?
Discussion item.
Are we voting for it?
Discussion item, yeah, action item, yeah, discussion item, action item. Okay, good. It'll be right after 15.1 as an action item. Thanks so much. The Elivo contract. Finally, with regard to the consent calendar before we vote on it, the board committee assignments that were posted, they were a little off, we just revised them. They've been reposted, so please look at those so you're sure of where the board members here land on the various committee assignments. Those have been revised, check it out, uploaded. Do we, number one, any questions on the consent calendar? I don't think anything else is moving, right? I don't think so. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar and a second?
I move that we approve the consent calendar.
Vice President Corn has moved.
I'll second.
Director Asadev has seconded. Do we have the ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved, consent calendar. And we were already at discussion. 14.1, update on the after-school program, which many of you, I'm sure, are very excited to hear about. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Board of Education, and good evening to the families who are still with us here in the boardroom and for those who are tuning in remotely. We are excited to be here with you this afternoon to present to you an update on our extended learning before and after-school programming with a focus on the after-school programming for this evening's presentation. You might recall that staff came before the board at the end of the school year last spring and provided an update to you as well, and we anticipate providing additional updates as we go through the first several weeks of school in the form of information items, presentations, and also updating our website. So with that, of course, I am the superintendent, and I'm here with Jill Hogan-Dyke, our Assistant Superintendent of Ed Services, and Brazil McIntyre, who is our after-school program supervisor. I wanted to take this moment to introduce to you all Kelly de Torres, who is our manager of extended learning. So welcome, Kelly, and thank you for joining the BUSD family. You can clap for Kelly, it's okay. And so as you all know, we always start our time together by grounding ourselves in our district mission, except for we can't because the clicker is not working. And so that mission is to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. And we do so by lifting four values, and those values are excellence, equity, enrichment, and engagement. Though we'll be spending the majority of our time this evening talking about engagement, specifically around after-school, we're also lifting and highlighting equity, as you will hear throughout the presentation, that it is one of the guiding principles that we use but are required to use as we think about after-school program placement. Our goal for this afternoon is to share our vision for extended learning. We also want to give you an update on some of the things that we heard from the community and from you, our board, in terms of challenges and how we responded to those challenges or attempted to do so. We're going to give an overview of the enrollment process, clarifying some things about how enrollment is decided and how placement is assigned. We're going to also give an update for the fall enrollment, giving you a sense of how many students we have on the waiting list still and why. And then update on program structure and support, giving you a preview of how we've restructured our program for the fall '25-'26, as well as how we intend to continue to support the program in the time, in weeks to come. And then finally, we're going to give you a highlight on our partnership with the City of Berkeley, as well as other after-school partners, to expand capacity to make sure that we can serve as many students and families as possible. Next slide, please. And so our mission, I'm sorry, our vision here for extended learning is to provide expanded opportunities through our before, during, and after-school educational enrichment programs to connect learning and extend the school day. Go on back, please, Liz. And we put that up, and we are committed to making that happen. Also really clear and honest about the fact that we likely cannot meet the need and the demand that exists in our community, though we, many of us sitting here are caregivers and parents ourselves and have been in education for a long time, we understand how critically important it is to have before and after-school options for our families. We are clear that Berkeley Unified alone cannot meet all of the need. And so you will hear throughout this presentation how we've tried to enact a community approach, again, with the idea of collaboration and partnership being key to us, for us to be able to expand the reach that we have for after-school programming, but still even with that being limited in the number of families and students that we're able to serve. With that on this slide, you also see our four, our five pillars for our strategic plan. Sorry, can you go one back, please, Liz? The reason why I wanted to show you these is because it does highlight for you all and for the public our goals for our after-school program. We are very much intent that our after-school programs have clear alignment with our school day learning and that they continue along the lines with access and equity. We also want to make sure that in our after-school programs, our students and our families feel safe, included, and supported, and that we have both enrichment and extended learning opportunities. We understand how critical it is to not just communicate, but to collaborate with our family and community members. And so every year, we set goals to improve our community and our family engagement. And then, of course, we understand how critical it is that the folks who are in front of our babies, both during the school day and after, are folks who are caring and skilled. And so we continue to focus on making sure we have qualified and well-trained staff for our after-school day programs, regardless of the position or role. We also know that our after-school programs are funded by various sources, and so we want to be intentional to make sure that we are complying with the guidelines of those funding sources. And as we think about after-school programming, that we're consistent in our structure and making sure that we are able to sustain both with funding resources as well as with compliance. And so again, we share that slide because we want you to know that we have goals, and we know that we are not there yet in either, in any of all of these categories, but that we are continuously focused on trying to make those realities for our students and families. Next slide, please. And so just for those who want, go back, please, who are new to the BUSD family and community in our after-school extended learning programs, Berkeley Unified has two programs that we offer for after-school. It's the Berkeley Learns Program and the Berkeley Bears Program. Our Learns Program supports children in reaching their full potential by providing academic support, recreational activities, and enrichment classes in safe and structured environment. It's 180 school days plus 30 days, and it prioritizes serving our unduplicated students, and we'll talk more about who those students are in the slides to come. Our Bears Program is also an after-school program that also seeks to create safe and nurturing environment for our students. Many of the staff here for the Bears Program are ECE credentialed staff. That program is 240 days, and enrollment is based on income, family size, and CPS referrals. Again, we'll speak more about that in the slides to come. I just wanted to go back to a conversation that we had in our presentation to the board last year. In that presentation, we share with you all some of our strengths and some of our challenges around those pillars that I shared with you a few slides ago. What we're going to highlight this afternoon is the, are those areas of focus that we have been really focused on. We've been thinking about all of them and trying to address all of them, but really wanting to lift for you all this evening the ones that directly impact fall enrollment and the current waitlist that you've heard about. And that is both our communication challenges, as well as our ability to support the need for extended day. Though I opened up this presentation saying that we are, we're honest with the fact that we do not have the capacity to meet all of the need and demands for after-school and extended-day programming, BUSD alone, we do continue to try to provide as much care as possible, aware that staffing is an issue and available space is an issue. So this evening, we're going to talk to you about how we've been trying to address that. We also know, and you've heard from our members of the community, that communication continues to be an area of focus and development, so we're going to share with you how we've tried to improve communication between the spring and for this fall enrollment process. So in terms of communication, again, none of this is to say that we've done it all well, right, and perfect, but just to show that there has been a lot of intention around addressing some of the common themes and challenges that has existed in the program across years. And so one of the things that we heard loud and clear was that notifications often came late. You might recall, those of you all who have been on the dais for some time, that in previous years, many families did not find out until August, and sometimes days before the school year began, what their placement was. We tried to make it earlier, and again, feedback, we can make it earlier than this. But an area of improvement is that we did two rounds of communications this summer, letting the first round of families know around July 6, and the second round know towards the end of July, closer to August 2. What we also tried to do was hear the feedback because previous communications said things like, "You're on the waitlist, period." And families said it would have been helpful to know what is the likelihood or the chances are that we would move on the waitlist. And so we tried to update communication to say things such as, "You're on the waitlist, and we do not anticipate you coming off the waitlist anytime soon," or "We don't anticipate any spots becoming available." So again, areas of focus, but definitely an intent to try to respond to the feedback that, you know, it was not clear if families should look for alternate forms of care. That said, we also tried to, in those communications, note and give families information about some of the partnerships that we established with the city and some of the schools in the area and other programs to let them know that there were spaces identified for Berkeley Unified School District students to have those slots. And so just wanted to highlight for you all a couple ways we tried to make that communication, not just more timely, but also more clear and explicit about the likelihood and other resources for our families to have if they were on the waitlist. We also, in those communications, really tried to be clear around our rationale, meaning the criteria that we use to identify students to be in our after-school programs. And we're going to talk about that in a lot more detail, again, in the slides to come. For space, I heard a couple folks give plugs to the City of Berkeley, and we too want to give plugs to the City of Berkeley. They have been awesome partners and collaborators, and a lot of that is an outcome of our two-by-two conversations last fall and last spring. But we actually have been doing this work together. We've been sharing with our, with our city partners what types of spaces we need. And so what you might notice is that there have been more TK spots opening up over the last several weeks. And so in a lot of communication and collaboration with the city to identify where spaces can be made available and where there's room for actually new programs. What we said to the city the second round when more spaces were open, and we also just heard this in the feedback, is that we cannot commit to transportation at this time for those, for those locations. However, in our conversation, we did have to go back and forth. Is it better to not offer space at all? Because we don't have the transportation yet confirmed, to go with those spaces? Or do we want to open up spaces for those families who might see that as a better alternative? And we made the decision to open up space, knowing that we were not able to guarantee or promise transportation to those spaces at that time. So it was not at all to try to be irresponsible. It was, it was, it was a kind of a catch-22, if you will, but we thought we want, we thought it was best to open up spaces for those families and then continue to work on transportation if that is available and an option. We've also partnered with folks outside the City of Berkeley, partnering specifically with the Berkwood Hedge School to provide after-school programming. Of course, all of these are for fee, but specifically offering programming for our TK families, our parents of TK students. And this is in addition to the other after-school programs that we have in the City of Berkeley who we also partner with. Again, not enough, but we've done a lot to increase space. And as the presentation continues, you'll see how in partnership with these folks, specifically the City of Berkeley, we were able to open up 200 more slots to students than we had in the year past. In terms of staffing, we continue to see staffing and understand staffing as an issue, a barrier, and a constraint. And so we came to you last spring to share with you information about plans to restructure after-school. We have been able to do that. And in that restructure, you'll hear more about that. We've been really trying to make sure that all sites have similar supervision, care, and support in terms of staffing. We also have actively been focused on recruitment and retention. And you heard many folks talk about the hiring event that happened just yesterday. At that hiring event, we had about 100 folks come through. And though those positions were not just about after-school positions, there were a number of folks who had interest in after-school. And so we're hopeful that that event and events like those will bring more staff to our after-school program. We also heard feedback loud and clear, not just from our board, but from our community members, that we really want to prioritizing, prioritize employing BUSD staff and not outsourcing after-school with contractors. And so this evening, you do see the Elivo contract on the consent calendar, which has now been pulled for discussion. But you will notice that even though we still have that contract, because again, we wanted to be able to offer some spaces at the start of the school year, that contract has been significantly reduced. And then finally, we are in the process of collecting after-school fees, those that were passed due to support the program, as well as the increased fees that were discussed and approved last spring. And so again, I wanted to open up the presentation to say that we know that there is still a lot of work to do, but want to make sure that our families and that you, our board, here and understand that we understand the importance of this and have not been doing nothing. We've been working hard to open spaces. And though you know, you've heard that there are several families who still need after-school care, we have been able to provide after-school placement for the majority of the families who applied and still work hard to figure out a plan for those for whom we have not been able to. And so with that, I'm going to transition to Brazil. I mentioned that there is a lot that goes into determining and identifying which students are placed in our programs. And so Brazil's going to give us some more information about how those decisions are made and what informs those decisions.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So this slide here is directly from the Alameda County Office of Ed, and it clearly outlines our top priority students. And so those are the students that are prioritized again and served first in our after-school program. So those students are identified there. When we go to the next slide, you will see like our priorities for Berkeley Learns. And so with this pyramid, you'll see at the very top are those same top priorities that were mandated from, by ed code. Again, that was linked in that slide. So that is our top tier. And then our second and third tiers are for income-based sliding scale families as well as students that attend five days a week. Those are per our ACES grant funding. And so the top three tiers overall are our mandated priorities. So students following in those top three tiers have a significantly higher chance of getting in the program. We also, as a program and district, you know, are trying to support our fellow BUSD employees in offering that as a priority. Again, returning students, siblings of returning students that attend the same school, as well as part-time students that are also at the same school. And so those, again, are how our program priorities are aligned with ed code as well as our own BUSD values as far as the students that we want to prioritize. So with, again, this slide, it does explain our ACES grant funding. And so with that, that is a $2 million roughly each year foundational grant. So our programs are really founded on these grants. And that, again, illustrates the top three tiers are directly mandated by our ACES grant funding that does serve our kinder through ninth-grade students. This grant also is the, what requires us to, again, operate program every school day along with a three-hour-per-afternoon minimum. So we want our students to be in the program for three hours so that they can take full advantage of all that we can provide. And again, we do also, as the superintendent mentioned, we provide academic assistance as well as enrichment activities as a mandate of our ACES grant. When we go to our next slide, it will represent our ELOP funding. And so for the ELOP funding, the very top tier is our mandate. So by ed code, that has been updated. And this is something that is about the ELOP funds or program. It's our Extended Learning Opportunities Program. That is about four years old, and you all approve our plans for that. That is reducing every year, so we're getting reductions in that grant funding. It started at like, oh, well, well over $2 million. And so now we're slightly under. And that's coming from just the change in our cities, or not our city, but our district's demographics. However, this funding is also mandated with ed code as far as we must prioritize those top-tiered students in order to, to operate using that funding. That funding does cover TK through sixth-grade students, again, primarily unduplicated pupils. And so with that funding, it also requires us to operate 30 intercession days. So those are 30 non-school days each year. We have initially, again, this is three years into these new requirements, but we have been running that during the summer. And so this, this program also is focused on enrichment opportunities for students and expanding their learning opportunities in general and in countless ways. So that is our, both of our funding streams. And then I wanted to just go on the next slide. Thanks, to just review and to kind of have the opportunity, which I'm very happy for, the opportunity to explain our weighted ranking system. I think there are a lot of, there's a lot of confusion maybe about how this works in each individual case. So we prepared a couple of comparisons so that you can sort of hopefully visualize or kind of see how this weighted ranking system works. And so what happens is each of those tiers that we just discussed is allotted a point value. And so as families register for the program, regardless of the time that they register, they are asked which priorities they qualify for. And so based on that information is how we then enter that into our ranking system. And it, again, assigns those points, does the calculations, and then will let us know down to the timestamp. I know that there's a lot of misconceptions about the timestamp. You know, whole question, I guess. And although timestamps will at some point come into play for most of our fee-paying families, it also is still based on these priorities. And so the beautiful thing about the ranking system is that it is very, not only equitable as long as the information that's being presented to us is truthful and, you know, verifiable, that it gives us a very clear and fair ranking of the order in which we offer space. And so this is different from what we've done traditionally. And I think that is also part of sort of the rub here, you know, of us kind of needing to shift to better align with our, our grant funding and our, our requirements and sort of the data that we need to produce and submit to the state for, to qualify to continue this funding that we desperately need. So hopefully, again, you can see in student A, this person was, is an unhoused student. They selected that they were, wanted full-time care, and they are a returning student. This person registered late, and late would be after round one. So round one is typically about a month or so time window where folks were notified and they had the opportunity to originally enroll. This particular student here registered late. But again, their priorities took them to the number-one ranking spot. The student B in this first scenario, registered early. They do qualify for the sliding scale. They do want full-time care. They are a returning student, and they may even have a sibling. But that does not, like, even with all of those, it does not necessarily put them in the front of those highest-prioritized students. So student C and D, similar circumstances. Student is eligible for free and reduced lunch, full-time student, and they may be a sibling of a returning student. That student, even though a sibling of a returning student gets a pretty low point value in the, in the ranking system, because of that, their eligibility and their priority status, I should say, they would be ranked number one. The other student, D, full-time student, BUSD, or student of a BUSD employee, sibling of a returning student. This may be like a TK or, you know, someone that is, hasn't been in the program before. And unfortunately, in this case, they also would still fall, you know, they would be ranked. So again, it would be based on all of the people that are at that particular site. I think that's also a little bit of a nuance because different schools have different demographics, which will result in different ranking. So that's the ranking. Yeah, thank you.
So Brazil just tried to walk you all through understanding how we prioritize students and how we decide who gets placed when. Wanted to just highlight a couple of things that she mentioned and that it is, it is school by school. And so I think sometimes folks think about it as just BUSD after-school as if it's one pot, and that we're comparing students, or these weights are comparing students to other students across the district. And so we've heard families say, "But I know this other's family whose have this situation, and they got in, but my family's in a different situation that maybe should have been ranked higher, and I didn't get in." So it is, again, by your school site's community. And she also mentioned this idea that we're doing things differently, and just wanted to pause and acknowledge that. In the spirit of really wanting to provide after-school programming to as many families and students who need and wanted in Berkeley, for, for quite some time, we have just allowed and assigned spots to families regardless of the criteria that you see outlined here. And again, we wanted to highlight and stress that the majority of our programming is funded through grant dollars, and those grants have requirements and restrictions. And those grants dictate how we enroll students, but also who we prioritize. We recently had an audit finding that called Berkeley out for not complying with that. And so we want to just acknowledge that it's not just in people's heads. There is something, there's something different about how we're doing after-school assignment. But wanted to provide some rationale as to why that difference exists. It is no malintent. It is really so that we can continue to get this essential funding for our families and continue to follow the guidelines that these grants are asking, that we do and prioritize the students, that it is asked for us to do so. So with our next slide, we're going to now bring us back. You kind of had some background and foundation. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I just want to add one more point, just as a reminder. We are also coming out of a time where we had significant resources that were funded through the COVID recovery dollars, which all expired in September. So there had been some level of flexibility coming out of COVID to expand services to, to, to other groups. And Berkeley, for a long time, has been doing that, both for our after-school program and our summer programming. With the expiration of the COVID dollars, which were pretty significant for us, I think we were using a little over $1 million, $1.5 million last year. There has been no replacement funds for those dollars. So we're talking about some significant budget constraints in addition to the staffing constraints and enrollment, enrollment requirements that Kelly is going to be talking about next.
Thank you and good evening. So with the additional understanding of our enrollment process, we present here a snapshot of our numbers for Bears and Learns programs as of August 1, 2025. These are very dynamic numbers that are updated regularly. So overall, you'll see to the left, the Bears program has 96 students enrolled with a waitlist to be processed, a waitlist slash to be processed of 138. The Learns program is significantly larger, serving 117 students in the morning and 1,557 students after-school. On the waitlist, we have 400- On the waitlist, we have 497 students.
One second. Just want to pause. I see some folks I don't see, but behind me, by my teacher eyes, I know that there's some folks who are taking pictures, and you're welcome to do so, but wanted to let you know that the entire presentation is also available online if you go to Board of Education.
We need this information.
It's available. I know, that's what I'm saying. It's available online if you wanted to get the entire presentation.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So it's important to clarify that our enrollment process is guided by specific guidelines, as Brazil stated. The guidelines on students-to-staff ratios, combined with current staffing challenges, are impacting our ability to enroll all interested students into the program. Next slide, please.
You want to highlight?
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you go back, please? Okay. Please let me point out, for the Learns program, the ratios up there are 20 to 1 for first through eighth grade, and 10 to 1 for the TK and kindergarteners. Slightly different for the Bears. It's a ratio of 14 to 1 for K through fifth, and 14 to 1, sorry, that's a typo, and 10 to 1 for TK. So let me reiterate, 14 to 1 for K through fifth, and 10 to 1 for TK. Okay. So to better understand staffing balancing student-to-staff ratios, needs and resources, we present three different scenarios for staffing based on a hypothetical enrollment of 200, 200 registered students, 50 TK and K combined, and 150 first through fifth graders. The goal is to show how different staffing ratios impact the number of students that can be served with the number of available spaces. So I'll draw your attention to scenario one. The focus of this is to maximize TKK enrollment. You'll see that there are seven staff members, the larger people up there, and the little people are TK and kinders. The result of this is it serves all 50 TKK students with a 1 to 10 ratio, but leaves only two staff for older students, the first through fifth students, who can only serve 40 students, because it's two staff, at a 1 to 20 ratio. So the impact, as you'll see in the bottom of scenario one, this leaves 90 available spaces and a significant waitlist for the older students, which is at 110. Looking at scenario two, the focus is to maximize first through fifth grade enrollment. It uses all seven staff for the older students to serve 140 students at a 1 to 20 ratio, but since the TKK students require a lower, lower ratio, only 10 can be served. So the impact is that, is it results in a very high number of available spaces at 130 and a waitlist of 70 from the TKK group. And scenario three, the focus on, is balancing for TK through fifth. This results in 20 TKK students, which is two staff, at a 1 to 10 ratio, and 100 first through fifth grade students with five staff at a 1 to 20 ratio. So this impact, while it leaves fewer spaces compared to the other scenarios, it also results in a smaller waitlist and likely feels more equitable, although it doesn't serve all registered So some takeaways in regards to these scenarios is this demonstrates that there's no perfect solution. Every choice we make about staff allocation has a direct impact on which students we serve and who must remain on the waitlist. The final decision on how to balancing staffing needs to consider more than just numbers. It must also factor in the specific needs of each, each site, and the prioritization requirements and ranking systems we have in place. So ultimately, these scenarios highlight the trade-offs we face when resources are limited compared to the demand of student need. Next slide, please. Thank you.
We'll be back. We're, I'm just going to, over the next two slides, going to talk about the extended learning programs, staffing for our coordinators and our site-based specialists. When we presented in the spring, we had been talking about a couple of scenarios to address those staffing structures. We want to recognize that we have 12 program sites, nine elementary and three at the middle school, and we have been making some staffing adjustments for our coordinators and site-based specialists with the few criteria that you see on the slide here. As we approached the restructure, we were considering the size of various programs, the distribution of responsibilities, the complexity of the programs, and we worked to address some of the challenges that we heard from staff last year, that we had some schools with no coordinators and some schools that had both a coordinator and a specialist. So we really needed to think about how we were going to be able to assign based on that existing need with the staff that was available. So we have three scenarios that we're actually going to be applying for the school year, mostly based on these criteria of size, program complexity, and wanting to make sure that we don't have any sites that have that imbalance of some not having any coordinator support. And we wanted to make sure that that was consistent. So at some of our, some of our larger programs, we're going to have site-based specialists at each, as you see in scenario A, a site-based specialist at each of the sites, and a program coordinator that will split their time across those two sites with some of the administrative abilities. In addition to the audit that our superintendent mentioned, one of the other components that we really have to be paying attention to is our record-keeping for attendance, which was another audit finding. That's a significant impact on our, our budget. You have to keep appropriate records, they have to be validated, they have to be done correctly, they have to be submitted on time, and we're working on structures to make sure that that's happening at a regular basis, because our funding is dependent on those reports and accurate attendance-taking. At some of our smaller schools, we're looking at placing, we won't have a site-based specialist, but that might, then the program coordinator is going to split across sites, and you see that example there for B. And then we have a couple of schools where there will only be a single site coordinator that will spend their, the entirety of their time there. So we're hopeful that our hiring fair that we had yesterday will result in filling some of the staffing vacancies that we have for our IA and our ITs. So those are our instructional assistants and our instructional technicians that also work to help approach the staffing ratio. But in the meantime, we do have the ALVO contract, which I know the board has pulled for consideration and discussion. So on the next slide, we want to make it clear to the board and our partners that we have done a lot of work to reduce the ALVO contract. We reduced the contract mid-year last year from 1.5 million to a million dollars. The contract that's before you this evening is for $470,000, which will cover about 10, 10 ALVO coaches. So also want to recognize the work of Dr. Bonduris in working with ALVO to reduce the amount of time to make staffing adjustments in case we had to have to adjust down. We have a shorter window to do that. So in the event that we can hire staff, we can reduce the dependence on the ALVO contract. The ALVO contract, however, still remains important for us, because we do have vacancies in the IT and the IT positions for our Learns program, the IA positions for our Bears program. And so that will enable us to add additional capacity to serve more students. The implications of a reduced contract also mean that we're going to be enrolling fewer students at the start of the school year, and we will still be able to add students as staff are onboarded. That reduced contract from the 20 ALVO coaches last year to 10, meaning, that means that we have fewer coaches to cover some of the vacancies that we have. So we're happy to entertain discussion on that contract, too. I'm going to turn it back to Kelly for an update on the work that we have been doing with the City of Berkeley.
Thank you. So as Priscilla stated, we have been working with the City of Berkeley to identify after-school programs available to families at a fee. The slide in front of you are two of those offerings, one at Shorebird, directed for grades first through fifth, and the other at Willard TK through fifth. Next slide, please. And on this slide, we were pleased over continued collaboration to identify new, new after-school programs to be offered. TOTLAN will serve our TK and kinder students, where a big need is, in addition to the West Campus Pool and the Harrison Park, but that has been collapsed as of just an hour or so ago. And I'll explain that, that in the next slide. So on this slide, you see a breakdown of the City of Berkeley after-school offerings. They gave us their last year's max capacity. You'll see that there are three new that were up there. Harrison was up there, but they had a lack of interest from families, so they collapsed that at this time. But I want to point out that from last year to this current year, additional spaces have been added at 155. That's without the Harrison numbers in there, and it's serving our TK students all the way through fifth grade. And let me highlight this, that all of those students are BUSD students in those programs. In addition, this is not a City of Berkeley partnership, but it's the Berkwood Hedge, Hedge Extended Day Opportunity, called X-Care at Berkwood Hedge School. They are offering space for families as well, and then we were able to continue our partnership to open up an additional TK program for families.
So Board Directors, that is the end of our presentation. We're now ready to engage you in questions, but before doing so, just want to reiterate that our intent this evening was to provide more context, was to hopefully provide a little bit more clarification around how decisions are made and why, and also be really transparent and note the constraints that we have as we try to enroll and build these after-school programs. But hopefully, that context clarification nor constraint implies to anyone in this room or anyone listening that Berkeley does not continue to have a commitment to try our best to provide after-school programming to as many families as possible. And I understand of how critically important being able to know where your baby is and be able to work, et cetera, is to so many of members of our community. So we continue to be determined to, to ask, how might we, to work with our partners, to work with our families, who actually were really instrumental in some of the solutions that we came up with for this year, and to figure out, again, how we can do different and better. But again, being really honest about the constraints that we're under, and hopefully giving you a little more information about the context in which these programs operate. And so with that, we'll take questions.
Dr. Shnaski.
Yeah, thank you. I have a bunch of questions. First, I want to welcome you, Kelly. I know it's not an easy job, especially to come into in the summer and, and hit the ground running, so thank you. And Brazil, thank you always for all the work that you continue to do. And yeah, I know it's a, it's a challenging time of year in your office. So I have a few questions. One is, I wanted some clarity on the audit finding. It's my understanding that not only did we have to adjust the way that we were prioritizing registration, but we were also required to do additional outreach to our unduplicated families. So letters had to go out to specifically state that folks were eligible for free childcare, which also impacted the enrollments and the enrollments for those particular classifications of students. So I would like, at some point, I don't know that you have this off the top of your head, but at some point to know how the enrollment was impacted because of that outreach with those particular populations, because I think that's a piece of the puzzle, especially on this year's stresses, despite so much effort that's gone into trying to expand what we've been able to actually expand. So that's one question I have. Another question I have is on one of the last slides where you were listing the City of Berkeley extended day opportunities. You listed the different programs, Shorebird Nature Center and Willard Clubhouse, as being prioritizing particular schools. And I'm just wondering how that coordination is happening, because if we are, if we are prioritizing particular schools, that allows our transportation piece to be a little bit less stressed, because you're transporting to programs from fewer schools. So I do see that there is a comment about prioritizing enrollment from those particular schools, so I'd like to know what that coordination looks like. And then I have two more quick questions.
So in regards to the transportation, those sites had already pre-existing agreements with our transportation to transport students from those particular schools and to the sites that are, you know, that they are joined with?
Right. But if I'm a parent at, well, Malcolm X, right, and I want my child, for example, to go to Francis Albreyer, because it's close to Malcolm X and my home, right? How, if I go on the City of Berkeley website to just sign up for after-care, what is the coordination piece that says, okay, you're at this school, right, and therefore, we're going to prioritize placement at this after-care site? Does that make sense? So almost like thinking about ways to zone some of the City of Berkeley programs with the school zones, so that we can maximize transportation and minimize impacts on families?
Yeah, and what I would say is the, the conversations that we've been in with the City of Berkeley and our Transportation Department, we are at capacity, and so those particular schools, again, had pre-existing routes, and so it wouldn't prevent someone for, to, from registering for that program. It's just saying we, they, the city has not arranged with BUSD Transportation to get students from wherever they are coming from to that location.
Okay. I feel like maybe that's a piece that we can continue to explore with the two-by-two as another opportunity to try to just maximize the limited resources we have.
Yes, that's what I was going to say. We've, I would say that, I can't say that it's been as intentional when assigning those spots from the city to say, hey, what school do you go to? Here's the closest program. It did come up in two-by-two, and it's something that we're definitely thinking about exploring. You have to get ahead of that for, for future enrollment seasons. But what we have been doing is seeing where babies are landing now, and, and it is true, as Brazil said, that our Transportation Department right now is stretched and is not able to guarantee transportation, but we're trying to be creative with our city partners. Think about what, how, what other ways might we support families to transport those babies to those programs outside of the BUSD bus? So a little bit backwards, we're, we're trying to respond particularly as we open up new spaces to fill slots, but that is definitely a conversation that's, that's been ongoing, and that zoning piece, something we'll keep in mind as we prepare for the next enrollment season.
Great. One more quick comment, really, for the audience, is another thing that was explored in the two-by-two, and that actually was in a budget referral, is having City, City of Berkeley contract out with some busing services to expand that, those opportunities. And I'm not quite sure where that is at this point, but I think we should return to that as well. Two more quick questions. Communication with the City of Berkeley. So we have heard reports that, like, timelines are not being coordinated super well, so families are finding out that they're not on the waitlist, or that they're on the waitlist, and then they go to City of Berkeley, but those programs are already full. So I'm just wondering how, I know there's been a lot of turnover, and so, you know, I'm wondering how we are trying to make sure that those timelines, I know that we're working closely with our partners in the city, so are there spaces for growth there, or opportunities there that we could explore? And then finally, communication. My last question is about communication with families, and I know we're always trying to improve that, and I know that your offices are super impacted with the work of getting kids enrolled and, and trying to do everything, but what opportunities we see that, you know, we have maybe for a centralized information system on a website that's updated once a week for all families, or something like that, that we could explore? Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge the timeline. For the first round of communication, that was the intention, and we were late in getting those letters out relative
those letters out relative to when the City of Berkeley opened up space. When it came around to the second round of communication that went out last week, we were in communication pretty much daily with the City of Berkeley so that they could coordinate that timing. Their space, like ours, is also limited, right? So it is hard, because we have heard from families that, you know, I called and yet and there's a waitlist. And as you saw, you know, we have, we have a number of families on our waiting list, and they're not that, they're not the equal amount of open spots in the City of Berkeley programs, and so that, but we were super intentional about that timing for the second round. So I think those are, that's a good example of area we learned, and that was an area of improvement. You know, we're trying to get communication out. We're also trying to get numbers, but there are also a number of steps that have to be taken to get students through the enrollment process to process the waitlist. I think the other thing that I would add is, just since we are on public record, is that we do have families that have been offered space, but they need to complete their registration. So we don't know whether or not they're going to be in that program, and they may or may not be looking at other options, but the extent to which families can complete that registration process will enable us to understand if we have more spots to open up for other families on the waitlist.
And then I think just in terms of your question about communication, you are right, it is always an area of focus and development for us. As Ms. Hogan-Dyke said, we are meeting even more frequently with our city partners and really trying to align on communication, and so thinking about how we can leverage the fact that we both have outlets, if you will, and tell the story, tell the same story in a similar, sorry, the example being that when we sent out the letters to our families about waitlists, we did make a point to note what the city programs were and where they're located, so trying to do more coordinated communication is one area of focus. And then, as you mentioned, updating our website more frequently to have really accessible, and accessible meaning also information that is not hard to understand and read, and so thinking about visuals, et cetera, in addition to just regular updates. And then leveraging our coordinators, as we shared, we now have a model where every site will have access to a coordinator who very much play an administrative role, not to support the students and staff of the program, but to support communication with families and thinking about how to leverage the fact that they're there on the ground every day, where families can come and ask them questions, and they'll have those answers in real time, but also are there an opportunity to get information out to our families more quickly as well. So we continue to focus on communication. We also, as you all know, had a task force with our, with members of the PTA last year that actually was kind of where the think tank occurred that led to some of the ideas that you see before you this evening, and so we do intend to continue to partner with the PTA. I'm actually scheduling a meeting with them in the next two weeks to figure out how they could also be a resource to get information out to families, but also a resource to help us get feedback and information from families around where we can improve in real time.
Are there other questions? Vice President Corn.
Yeah, let's see. Where do I want to start? I guess one question that I would be interested in hearing you talk about is the slide with all the waitlist data that is school by school. It looks like some of our largest schools, like Malcolm X and Washington, are particularly impacted by waitlists. So I guess I'm, I'd like to hear your plans for, is there a way to address those most impacted schools first? Is there anything we can do?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the data that see, you're saying Washington. So Washington, we've enrolled 129 and have 81. I guess most impacted might be slightly relative.
Yeah, and I recognize that it's like, because those, there's more students.
Yeah, I don't know, Sam, if you want to chime in and help us, or you either, Jill, I am not privy to how we decide when we do add more capacity to programs, how we decide which site to add capacity to, because I think that's kind of what you're asking, and I don't know if there's some guidelines as to how we do that, or if we just have the discretion to look and see which schools have more students on the waitlist and then assign it that way. So anybody from the team?
In June, I believe it became, it came before you, where we did increase Malcolm X and, I'm so sorry, the other site escapes me at the moment, but we increased two sites with new positions. The new positions are not filled yet, so, I mean, it's a little moot, but, so yes, we are doing that, and I think that that's something that we all have, you know, acknowledged will happen as people get hired. Like, we will be able to enroll those people that chose to stay on the waitlist. We know it's not the best timing, but it is the timing, the best we can do.
Thank you. I think also I may have missed, you mentioned that the Harrison Park program was open and then it was closed. I think I might have missed the explanation for that.
Yeah, it was open, Harrison Park, for enrollment, but they had not a lot of interest, just less than a handful, really, so they closed it.
That's a bummer.
Yeah. Yeah, so Director, Vice President Corn, when we met with the city and talked about even opening these additional spaces, the city has a threshold, a minimum threshold that they have to meet to justify the expense, for lack of a better way to say it, and so we were excited that we were able to hit that threshold and actually exceed it for all the other placements, but that was the reason why, and they were really clear about that. And as we open up, or if we open up any other sites, that's going to be the case as well, which is why we try to communicate it as soon as possible.
Great. My last questions are in the spirit of sort of creative problem solving. I've been thinking about the partnership with the City of Berkeley and how to make that more accessible. Have we thought at all about some of the programs that are located relatively close to school sites? Like, for example, the new program at TOTLAND is pretty close to Berkeley Arts Magnet. Could we have a walking group that, where a City of Berkeley employee comes and meets a group of kids and walks them to TOTLAND? Is that something that's been considered in order to free up spots on the bus to get more kids to more programs?
Definitely was a part of a conversation, not to free up spots on the bus, but to provide an option for families who could not get a spot on the non-BUSD after-school transportation buses. That said, that's an idea that was early in exploration and is still being explored, because I know it's not what folks want to hear, but similar to us, the City of Berkeley is constrained in terms of staffing as well as fiscal resources. And so as they staff programs and have people at the sites to take care of the babies, it's harder to figure out who can be the ones transitioning the students. That said, it's still an idea that we are exploring, and again, we are committed to asking ourselves, how might we, and getting really creative in how we respond to that question.
Great, thank you. And similarly, in the spirit of creative problem solving, I'm thinking about the partnership with Berkwood Hedge, and I guess I'm, I'm wondering about, well, I'm also thinking about schools like John Muir, where we have several families here tonight that has a program called Kids in Motion, which is neither a learns program nor a bears program. Have we considered any further partnerships with community-based programs that might be able to provide programming and staff but might not have space? Could we rent out space in our schools to any of those programs in order to provide more access? Is that something that is a possibility?
I would say that it's a possibility. I think we are running into a few issues around supervision of students after a certain time, so there are some of those constraints that need to be considered as we're looking at those, at that as a possibility.
Thanks. I'm glad you covered my CBO question. That was going to be my question about exploring partnerships with community-based organizations. I know that formerly in the two-by-two, we had received many like yep updates on like the recipients of their various grant programs that support our unduplicated students, so I just wanted to know if there had been any possible conversations with the yep about the CBOs that they're funding as potential partners for after-school providers, and wanted to just echo support for what Director Corn said. I think potentially with Safe Outs to Schools, it might be a good partnership to organize walking school buses to these after-school providers, so I think that's an opportunity for Alameda County Safe Outs to School, and if you need support on any of those connections, happy to support, but I think that's another venue to explore. And I had a question for Assistant Superintendent Hogan-Dyke. I know you talked about the timeline, how it's a little tricky to move on to the next potential family when we're still waiting for folks to complete registration once they're invited. I just wanted to better understand that process a little bit, like what's the, how much time do we give them? Like, once they're given notice, how much time do we give them to complete that, and how could we expedite that so we can just move on quicker to the other family? I just want to understand what that process looks like.
I'm turning it over to the expert.
Not hardly. So with the enrollment, the first round, I'm getting the quotes wrong, I believe we opened, we had a couple of snacks with the beginning, the opening up of registration. We offered, it started on April 15th, and then it reopened for the older grades on the 21st, so people were able to enroll from the 21st until June, or I'm sorry, May 25th. They got about a month to enroll, and those were all of our priority students that were notified, as Director Shunovsky stated earlier as well. And so that was the first round, if you registered before May 25th. And then the second round opened on June 16th, and so on June 16th, anyone that hadn't registered in that first period, it's now open and it's open ongoing. For round two, we had to pick a day to, you know, stop, and so we chose July 18th in hopes that we would be able to, you know, kind of translate all of those priorities and contact people that may have, didn't have, you know, like the proof documented, things like that. And so that's why there's a little bit of a, I mean, we need that time in order to process the priorities and do that piece with fidelity. And so that's where it is at this point, and so we processed the round twos that enrolled up until July 18th, and so they had another month open. And so those are the ones that we're like at capacity with that, and so like folks that registered after that, they're on the waitlist. We just haven't had, like, we don't have any more capacity, and so again, we're waiting for those people to respond to the first offers that we sent out in hopes of, you know, filling them, of course, with those people, because those are the highest priority folks. So it gets a little bit, you know, of a challenge to kind of take a space away. We do have, at this final of round two, folks have until the 8th to accept their registration. Again, that's basically the end of the road, and so that we can have, we can be prepared for Wednesday. So I hope that answers kind of your question. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Can I just clarify one thing, Brazil? Are there spaces that are currently being held open for high-priority unduplicated students? Is that what you're saying?
So I am saying that. I think that we, in this particular year, we are in this strange situation of we have, again, offered with fidelity, and we are offer, you know, extending those offers with that same, you know, notion of these are the most highest priority students. You know, they won't stay open forever. So again, like those spots, regardless of your priority, if no one shows, you know, we're going to reach out to all of those people and make sure they saw it and, you know, make sure that they have the opportunity, but if they opt out, then we are 100% going to, you know, go straight back to our waitlist to, you know, consult and offer accordingly.
Thank you.
Board, colleagues, are there other questions? Yes, there are.
Yeah. No, that's.
Oh, that's it with you. Thank you so much. I don't have questions myself, there have been asked here. Yeah, I know that this is something we will have ongoing conversations about. Thank you. Next on up is, we have the 15.1 action item, approval of the 45-day revision to the 26 budget. And I'll turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Pauline Follinsby. Thank you. I'm sorry, Assistant Superintendent, can we take a quick five-minute break?
Yeah, sure.
There was a no, and then there's yes. You can, of course, everybody can take a break. Hello, hello. If you want to be back home before 11 o'clock, or want to come back up to the front.
I'm gonna present with my mask on. Hope you guys can hear me.
So, one minute count, then we'll start up again.
Should I get started? So this evening, I'll be presenting the 45-day revision to the 25, 26 budget. And all our presentations are grounded in our mission, and we aim to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to our world. Objective of tonight's presentation, we're seeking board approval for the impact of the governor's enacted budget on the district's unrestricted general fund. The agenda, we're gonna review some background information on the 45-day revise. We're gonna look at the summary of the impact of the unrestricted general fund, as well as on the unrestricted general fund's multi-year projections, take a look at next steps and resources, and a quick update on federal funding, even though technically it's not part of the 45-day revise. So this slide goes and describes why we actually have to do a 45-day revise and what head code section this really applies to. And it also states that the governor actually signed the budget on June 27th, which means that we have until Monday, August 11th, to revise the budget. And of course, by doing it tonight, we're actually meeting our deadline. So there's no requirement for us to actually do another Saks update and a formal update of the, of the budget. We can present a summary in an Excel spreadsheet, and that would actually meet the requirement for the 45-day revise. As a reminder, what I'm presenting tonight is just the impact on revenue. We're not looking at expenses at this time. We'll be bringing back the information on expenses when we do the first interim, when we bring it to the board in December. And when we're looking at our revenue, of course, we have to focus on the importance of our core values of allocation, which is on the next slide list. So of course, you've seen this before. We've presented it every time, and we're looking at budget balancing solutions and looking at our resource allocation. So the, the section that resonates with me is equity, to ensure that we're allocating resources to realize our district's mission, and to address inequities and remove barriers. And of course, sustainability and stability. We're trying to find ongoing solutions to our budget questions and not just one-time solutions. So the state of our budget, I had presented this with the adopted budget. So we are in a critical financial situation, and without additional revenues or reduction in expenditures, it's unlikely that we will maintain or receive a positive certification. And at that time, this slide was, again, with the adopted budget. We were hoping that the enacted budget would provide additional expense revenue for the district. As a reminder, in the next slide, this is what our adopted budget actually looked like. When we adopted, remember, the county had advised us not to add in any revenue that was uncertain. The only thing that we had was the, was a COLA. And that actually gave us an adopted budget with an undesignedated fund balance of $104,000, which is less than the cost of one teacher. So it was very, very tight. It was barely balanced, but it did not have in any additional revenue. Well, now we get to the 45-day revise. And in the governor, when he finalized the budget, he approved $315 per ADA, one-time discretionary block grant. When we factored that in, that's gonna give the district 2.7, oh, sorry, this next slide. I'm looking at it. That's gonna give the district an additional $2.8 million. And the caveat is that this is one-time. So we cannot put ongoing expenses, or we should not put ongoing expenses on one-time revenue. And yes, it's a sizable amount, but unfortunately, it's one-time. We also got additional funding for the TK LCFF add-on, and we got an additional $2,395 per student. That's giving us $819,000, but that's on an ongoing basis. So with these two additions to the unrestricted general fund, that's adding another $3.7 million. And that's taking our revenue from 122.4 to 126.4, well, 127 million. And what does that do to the bottom line? So we would go from $104,000 to 3.7 million. But again, next slide list, sorry. That would give us $3.7 million, but with the understanding that 2.8 of this is one-time. When we look at the multi-year, what does that do to the multi-year? So you can see the, the, the $0.8 million comes in as part of the LCFF funding. That's ongoing, so it is in all three columns. But the 45-day revise is actually only in the first column. So on the next slide, what this means is that our undesignedated fund balance goes to $3.7 million in '25, '26, $4.5 million in '26, '27, and $6.6 million in '27, '28. But it's important to remember that this does not have in any expenses for negotiated increases at this time. A little bit more about the block grant, this gives you a little bit more information. We talked about it being $315 per ADA, it's giving us $2.8 million. Allowable uses are discretionary, state priorities are highlighted. And in that box to the left, it kind of looks at what the state priorities are. But for the district, it's totally on, it's not, it's totally discretionary, so we can use it as we see fit. And we do have until September 30th through 2029 to expend these funds. It's not included, as a reminder, we did not include it in the adopted budget based on information from the county. And also, we need to remember that when we adopted, we were $1.6 million short of our target. So yes, the 2.8 is positive, but remembering we were $1.6 million short of meeting our target. A little bit more about the 45-day revise. This is, this is a little bit more background information. The additional $2,397 per student, per pupil will give us, will bring the add-on to 5,545 per TK student. Again, ongoing funding of $0.8 million. Caveat, we do not have negotiated increases in the out years, in '25, '26 in the out years. So this is a reminder of where we are with our budget balancing solutions. We had, had a target of $7.6 million. We did find $6 million, of which 5.5 was ongoing, and 0.5 was one-time. I can hardly breathe through this thing, so sorry. So that, that, so we're actually short of the target by the $1.6 million. Next steps, we're gonna be closing our books by September 15th, and that will inform the ending balance for '24, '25, and the beginning balance for '25, '26. So that will help us determine just how much money we will have available for spending in '25, '26. We will be bringing the first interim to the board for approval, which will include the revenue from the 45-day revise, as well as additional expenses for programs and operations. We don't know what that's gonna look like now, but be aware that this funding should, could also possibly cover increases. We continue to face near and long-term challenges, including, Russell Anderson, risk to the state revenue forecast, or reduced ADA compared to pre-pandemic period. Our ADA is actually trending up slightly after the pandemic. We have expiring one-time funds and grants, our increasing program costs are outpacing revenues and contributions, and of course, we have uncertainty with the federal funding. We have to remember to continue to develop comprehensive plans to maintain fiscal solvency and preserve the integrity of our educational programs. As a reminder, we have our resources, and I lift this from our superintendent's presentation. Every budget book that we have is actually posted online, is linked in the section that, in, on our website. And it has like a lot of information in terms of detailed expenditures by object codes by, with different funds. So we do have a lot of budget and actual information online, and we encourage people to actually refer to that information. Quick update on our federal funding. The Trump administration announced on July 25th that it will release over $5 billion that was previously frozen. And the impact for us is that we had thought we would reduce funding for our adult school program. These were the programs that were impacted. Next slide, please. These are the programs that were impacted, and you can see the adult school education is listed here. However, with this release of funds, we, our program is not in jeopardy at the moment, but of course, we don't know what the funding is gonna be like in the out years. And this is just something that I pulled from the workshop I went to in terms of the federal funding in context and federal executive orders. So next slide list. So this is just by way of a quick background and a quick update on federal funding. And at this point, I'll take questions with the reminder that we're actually presenting this with the Berkeley Proud logo, or whatever it is. Whatever it is, hashtag, oh, say it loud, right, right.
#BerkeleyProud, that's right. #BerkeleyProud. Thank you. Thank you so much. Are there onboard colleagues who have questions?
Just a quick comment. I'm super excited that we received all the funds that we were anticipating we were gonna receive and have a positive fund balance. And I want to thank you for all your work. And next time you say, say it loud, say it proud, or Berkeley Proud, we want to see a little cheer.
That's right. Thank you so much. Anybody else? Board colleagues, thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, we have to vote? Oh, I'm sorry, it's approval, actually. Yes.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Great. We've got Director Shnawski moved, and Director Vasidh seconded. Do we have the ayes?
Aye.
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 Any nays? The motion is approved. Approval of 15.1. Next on up, we have 13.8, which was formerly in our consent calendar, the LVO contract has been shifted over to action. We're having a...
Okay, since I pulled this, I just have a few questions. First, I want to really compliment the district on the work to reduce the amount of contracting that we're doing. And while I understand the members of the audience might not understand why that's important, our contractors are very expensive, and therefore, the number of people that we can actually serve is reduced by the number of contractors we use because we don't have the resources to hire additional staff. So I'm just really thrilled that in a year's time, we've reduced it down to a third of what it was. So I think that should be applauded. I'm wondering how many vacancies we currently have. I see that the LVO contract right now is for almost half a million dollars for 10 coaches. And so I'm wondering how many vacancies we currently have. And I'm also wondering, what is the process? And Associate Superintendent Hogan-Dyke did mention that there is a way for us to reduce our contracted positions if we fill additional vacancies. But I'd like to know what that process is. So if, say, we fill our current vacancies, which I think is somewhere in the 20s, 16, okay, so close to 20, so...
So as of yesterday morning, we had 23 vacancies, but we have at least two people in the plans to be starting next week, and hopefully more than that. So as it reduces. And then Jill, do you know the specifics of the timeline for the winding down the contract?
Just that we've been able to reduce the amount of time that we can do that because prior to last spring's negotiations, I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of 30 days.
Yeah, I think it's at least half of that.
Yep.
Yeah. So as soon as we decide to hire somebody and we know that they're gonna start, we can reduce the contract with 14 days notice or something around that point.
Wonderful. And one more question I have about those vacancies. So we have 21 vacancies currently for our after-care team. And if we fill all 21 of those vacancies, then we would work on filling the 10 additional spaces that are currently filled by LVO contractors? Or are those part of the vacancies?
Those are considered part of the vacancies at the moment. Those are considered part of the vacancies at the moment. But we would come back in terms of looking at, do we need to expand? And do we need to add FTE? And how are we funding that? And all of that would be a discussion we would bring back if that ends up being where we go.
And then, with the goal, of course, of then, if we're able to fulfill, fill all those vacancies, and then potentially add more spaces with our new fee structure, it could be, we could potentially start to do that and expand.
Potentially.
Potentially, yeah. It's a slightly more complicated answer, because as you saw from tonight, we have to prioritize spaces with the existing grant funds for very specific populations. We have to demonstrate that those, we have done extensive outreach to fill those spots before we think about, before we're able to take that step. Yes, great. But those vacancies are currently in our budget, so they are positions that we can fill. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I did want to understand the vacancies, and I wanted to also just call out the continued need to reduce, continue to reduce those contractors, so that we can continue to expand our BUSD family and make sure we're using our resources to leverage those spaces as much as possible. Thank you. And thanks again for that job, Fair.
Thank you, Director Shnawski. Are there other comments or questions about this item? So, that was a good conversation about this. Now, we have, it's an action item, right? So, we need...
I move to approve this item.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Director Korn. Are there the ayes?
Aye.
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 Are there any nays? And Ms. Charis, none of this has to be done by roll call. Okay, good. Thank you. Great. And so, we are moving on to our extended public comment. Just note that you have an information item there. The stuff is in your online pack. So, I'm going to call two folks to come on up, just like last time at the start. I think these are, these are all in person. I will double-check to see if anyone's online, too. First, we're going to go in person, and really make sure, correct me if I mispronounced your name, Sid Harth, Verma. Will be on first. Great. With Crystal Williams waiting on, on... Sorry? One minute, I'm sorry, yeah. And Crystal, just please wait on the side there. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for giving me an opportunity to speak. I know I don't have very much time, and I know there's a lot of other parents who feel the same as we do, but I just want to let you know the personal impact on what this situation has resulted in. My wife and I, we both work in healthcare. We both have many, many patients who we serve in our community. These people are Malcolm X families. These people are people who we see around in our community. These people are people who need our services, too. And currently, with the way things are going, we are both going to have to reduce our services to make sure that our youngest, who's six years old, coming up to first grade, is going to need childcare. We have two older sons who go to Berkeley High, and today, I was even thinking, what else can I do? Can we have the kids pick up our youngest and bring them home so that we can keep providing for our community? This is really hard. We're here to support you, too, and we want to be included in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on up is Crystal Williams, and then Mimi Main can come up as well.
All right, thank you. I'll try to keep this quick. No pleasantries. I know everybody understands the gravity of this situation. I'm a Sylvia Mendez parent. I have a rising fifth grader and second grader. We've been in the Learns program since coming out of COVID. My fifth grader was granted a spot. My second grader is waitlisted everywhere. And so, this has impacts not only for this year, but future years, as she will no longer have sibling preference or returning preference. We're just going to be impacted on this for the long term. We've taken every action possible, as quickly as possible. We've gone in person, echoing what's been said, the lack of responses and communication is absolutely stunning. Stunning, dead silence, and a lot of miscommunication. Because when we went in person, as in, even as instructed, trying to be as proactive as possible to sign up for other programs, we were told that they had no idea what we were talking about. So, thank you. I know other folks share this concern. I hope we can do better in the future.
Thank you. Mimi Main, and next on up, Jennifer House.
Hi. Just to read into the record, at John Muir, I'm on a WhatsApp group with the majority, if not all, of our first graders. And there's another parent here who's representing a similar group for all, for the TK and K classes. And not one person on these threads has received any notification, any communication about whether we're in Bears or not. So, that's not like bad communication, that's just nonexistent communication. So, make of that what you will. And I had been looking out at the BUSD job postings yesterday, and after-school post was, a job was posted, continuous, ongoing. That hasn't been there previous to yesterday. And so, I know there's job fairs, and there's other routes that people are hired, but I'm just like, why?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Jennifer House, and then next up, Mike Jeff.
Thanks so much, everybody. So, a couple of points. I want to thank the creative ideas that were trying to come out. That was interesting, and some of those, I felt like cheering and applauding. This is great ideas. I wanted to put out there, someone mentioned this, the private options are going to be absolutely cost prohibitive for many parents. Just naming, we're a Washington family, and I was excited about the Berkwood hedge option. It's $1,200 a month. And I just put this out there, we thought, well, you know what? Maybe we just do it for a month, we make it happen, and then we figure out something else. It's a 10-month contract, and they actually would prefer $12,000 upfront. So, I just want people to understand, just to put this on the record, that those are great options in theory, but in reality, it's going to be really difficult for most families to swing that. We are the kind of family that's been so excited to get away from preschool costs for so long. One other quick point, the CBO, I would love if we could continue to pursue that. There is a middle price point somewhere that I think could work. We just have to figure out what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Hefe was formerly here. Then Lou Reardon.
Hi, thanks, everyone, and thanks, Superintendent, for speaking one-on-one with me and some of the other folks here. Couple of things I just wanted to point out as these discussions continue. Just how did we get here? What did we know when and why wasn't this shared with families? By my count, from the data that was presented, 96 students are currently enrolled in Bears with 138 on the waitlist. In Learns, that's 1,480 enrolled, 526 on the waitlist. At John Muir, we have 18 students enrolled and 52 on the waitlist. Why weren't families that were 40th with 18 enrolled? Why weren't they notified? Hey, you're probably screwed. Find another option. Months ago, when they saw these applications coming in April and May, they could have done some outreach and said, look, we have a problem here, we have a crisis. Instead, we're finding out about it now through back channels, and now tonight. So, I just hope you guys can keep pressure on to have better communication when there are enrollment challenges like this, and hopefully solve the enrollment challenges. Thank you.
Thanks so much. And still checking, Mike is not here, Mike Hefe. And we have some folks online, I believe. I'm sorry. One person online. Katie Reese. Katie, are you ready to... Okay, you're being promoted now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. On the after-school topic, like everyone else, Superintendent, I really appreciated your presentation about after-school tonight, but you presented to a nearly empty room. So, I'm going to urge you to take this issue outside the boardroom. All families in the district deserve to hear this information directly from you across multiple platforms, along with a heartfelt acknowledgement of the seriousness of the situation. Doing so would be a signal of your respect for and partnership with families and desire to address this crisis. I've heard no such acknowledgement from any higher up in the district in my four years that I've been encountering this challenge. Funding and staffing issues are hard to solve, but communication should have improved yesterday. I'll just end by saying I'm a public school teacher, and I spend a lot of time defending the public school system to folks who have the privilege to look elsewhere. And on this issue, I'm just really at a loss for words. It shouldn't be so hard to send a child to school for the average length of an American school day. Okay? We need to fix this issue. Please demonstrate that you take this seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Charis, we have anyone else popped up? Lily Simonsen. Lily, are you, you're being promoted now?
Again, I just wanted to mention also, yeah, none of the John Muir families, including myself, have received any communication at all that I know. There was no first round, second round, anything. Now, I also know that everybody in this room works really hard. I don't want to like have this sort of us versus them mentality. I know that you're dealing with funding crises and staffing difficulties, and we all understand that it's really difficult. And I just want to say, like, we're frustrated, but we are on your side, and we know you're, everybody in this room is doing the best with what they have. But I just wanted to say that the sum of the parts of the presentation didn't really add up, especially the piece about communication, as others have mentioned. I don't know if that was specific to Learns, but with Bears, there hasn't been any information that anyone in our rising TK or rising first-grade class has received. And thanks.
Thank you so much. Ziva online, is that, that's it? Okay. Thank you so much for your, sharing your comments tonight. Are there extended board member comments? If there are not, a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Director Shnawski moves. Do a second.
Second.
Director Vasidh have seconds? We have ayes, ayes, no nays. We are adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thank you.